Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council Meeting for Monday, June 28, 2021. Call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all city councilors are present, including City Administrator Canrath. At this time, I'd like to invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag is located behind City Administrator Canrath. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everyone. There's nothing under general this evening, other than to remind folks that our next council meeting is July 12th, potentially, and it will be in person back at City Hall Chambers. Up next is Item 5, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents at this time? Councilor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As most of you know, last Saturday, we hosted our 50th Downtown Art Festival on Main Street. It was a beautiful day. It was highly attended by residents, people from out of the city, a lot of new people moving into the city. We had a lot of good communication and conversation. But most importantly, I would like to say thank you to the city staff and the volunteers from the various departments, boards, and commissions who had information and educational booths set up for the attendees. This is something new, to have a large group of our commissions and boards involved. In attendance, we had Saco Park and Rec, the Long Range Planning Committee, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Group, the Arts Commission, the Conservation Commission, and Age-Friendly Saco. Having these groups in attendance was a wonderful addition. They were able to promote the outreach of the city, the transparency, and just an overall sense of community with information and education to our residents, and the feedback we received was very positive. So I'd like to thank everybody that came out and promoted a booth with us.
Thank you, Councilor McPhail. I concur. It was a great day to be downtown and one of the great events. Any other committee correspondents at this time? Okay, moving on to public comments. City Administrator Canrath, have we received any public comment for tonight's meeting?
I have none at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, open up to members of the public who wish to speak before the council. Please use the raise hand feature or star nine, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Again, the raise hand function on Zoom or star nine. There are no hands up. Moving on to Item 7, Approval of the Minutes. There are no minutes to approve. Item 8 is Consent Items. Item 8A is approving the schedule for July meeting dates, which is set for the 12th and the 26th, the 12th and the 26th. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Councilor Berman, is there a second?
A second.
Councilor Hatch, any discussion? Roll call vote on consent items. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Seven zero, the motion passes. That brings us to Item 9 of tonight's agenda, and that is Action Items. First up is Item A, a second and final reading on a budget amendment, a COLA adjustment. Councilor McPhail, page 3 of your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the fiscal year 2022 budget process, a portion of the COLA was included as part of the approved budget in the individual pay lines. Additional funds were appointed into payroll contingency to be reserved to bring the total COLA to 3% following union negotiations. It is common practice to mirror the COLA received by union and non-union employees. This amendment simply redistributes the increase to the individual pay lines from contingency. It is important to adjust the COLA to a 3% amount to create pay equity between non-union and union employees, address compensation concerns, compression concerns, and ensure retention of our employees. Be it ordered that the City Council approve the second and final reading of Budget Amendment Number 1, fiscal year 2022, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gunn. Any discussion? Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just consider this at this time, I think initially the timing was right, but we have not even had the union negotiations at this time. So I feel that this should probably be tabled until, before we vote, we should actually go into the union negotiations, which has been scheduled for the last couple of meetings, but has not been able to occur until after the council actually looks at the union negotiations. It's just the timing is off.
Council Archer, am I to consider that as a motion to table?
Yes, you may consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston, motion to table. Motion to table is not discussionable, so we're just going to have a roll call vote on the motion to table made by Councilor Archer, second by Councilor Johnston. Council Archer? Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn? Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to table passes seven zero. Moving on to Item B, First Reading, Chapter 81, Conveyance of City-Owned Property, 32 Market Street. Councilor Hatch, page 7 of the packet. Councilor Hatch, you're muted.
Sorry about that.
Happens to all of us, at least one time a meeting.
There you go. I got over the hump. A city-owned property at 32 Market Street is proposed for a possible sale to Southern Main Affordable Housing. The one and a half acre parcel was the subject of an effort by the City Council in 2013 to promote affordable senior housing. That council approved a motion to enter into a developer-friendly agreement at minimal cost for the land, contingent on a 10% of the resale of units being directed into a housing fund that would benefit future city efforts to encourage affordable housing. With agreement in hand, the SMAH developed a plan for a 10-unit condominium project intended for downsizing seniors who are selling larger homes and looking for a smaller affordable housing alternative. This item was reviewed by the planning board at its April 6 meeting. The board voted unanimously to forward a positive recommendation for the sale of the parcel while recognizing that the parcel abuts the Boston and Main Rail Line and may be the future route of the Eastern Trail for which an easement should be considered. I move to approve the first reading and to schedule a public hearing for July 12, 2021.
Motion's been made to approve first reading and set the public hearing for July 12th. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McPhail. Any discussion? Councilor Berman?
Thank you. I see the staff recommendation talks about an open spaces grant, and we have an email from City Solicitor Murphy regarding an open spaces grant and the use of this grant then for property that may be used for housing in the future. But that's the only information I've found in the packet about this open spaces grant. And I'm wondering if we can hear maybe from City Planner Hamblin or other city staff about the open spaces grant, what it was used for, what restrictions come with it, and whether there are, what are the consequences for violating any conditions of that grant, including perhaps having the developer reimburse, I'm sorry, the bond if necessary.
City Planner Hamblin, you joined us this evening. Thank you. If you could unmute and if you have an answer to that question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will take a stab at it. Yes, most properly stated, the city voters approved an open space bond in the very early years of the 2000s, might have been 2002, 2003, something like that. The Economic Development and Planning Director at the time was the primary staff lead on that project. Yes, the city attorney, Tim Murphy, has certainly tickled my memory cells by pointing out that a portion of that bond evidently, and I think this was referenced by Councilor Johnston at the last meeting, was used as a local match with help, for help with Brownfield funding that was secured from SMPDC to clean up contamination of this parcel. When asked about it in the wake of Councilor Johnston's point made a couple of weeks ago, the city attorney did a little research and pulled out the 2011 email that has been provided in your packet. And counselors who have read through that will see that Tim was fairly clear in suggesting that the bond, the open space bond, was fairly specific about getting approval from voters to use the $1.5 million that was approved to purchase open space parcels across the city. And today, we can point to some of the results of that, the Horton property out off Route 112, for instance, and I know there are a few others that don't come to mind at the moment. But Tim, being fairly, well, quite familiar with the matter and what the bond that was approved was all about, was able to pull out this 2011 email wherein he was asked by the city administrator at the time, would it be acceptable, would it meet the terms of the bond, to utilize monies for preparing this parcel for a housing use? This was an eye-opener. I did not realize this, going back four to five, to six to seven years ago, when Southern Main Affordable Housing took its first shot at this, at acquiring the property at 32 Market Street for affordable senior housing. Evidently, the city attorney feels that he had provided this advice to the city council at the time, and as city councils can do, obviously, it's within their range of abilities to do, they said thank you very much to the city attorney and decided to go forward with the affordable housing promotion anyhow. So in the interest of, I guess, a complete record, we felt it was important to bring this to the council's attention. Again, it was relatively new news to me. We've also got a couple of other pieces of information. Councilor Berman, and really, it boils down to emails back and forth with the city attorney. They did not make it into the packet for the first reading this evening, but there'll be a somewhat more complete picture provided prior to the public hearing in a couple of weeks. The applicant, this info has been shared with the applicant. They were not excited about it and had some responses, and staff will make those available as well. So that's a long-winded way of saying, I guess, some new information that is in play regarding this property and what was intended with the city finances that were used for it several years back now.
Thank you, Bob. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. So I had asked for clarity on this bond money issue back in 2016, I think it was, that it came to council at that time as a memo, because I had recalled back in 2011 and 13 having, knowing that the city used, or potentially was using, bond funds. But at that time, again, they stated last week, 2011, when it first came to the city, it was just accept the land from Down East Energy, and the thought was that we'd use those bond proceeds to do the remediation of the land. It wasn't until later on that the housing came up. And obviously, you know, I asked last week, and I'm appreciative that, you know, we now have Attorney Murphy's legal opinion. I didn't realize he had given one back in 2011. And honestly, I don't know how council moved this forward and if they had that information. But I mean, given all the unresolved issues and with respect to the easements that we still haven't clarified, you know, the cost that the city expended for sewer and paving, and now, you know, this knowledge, you know, that we may be inappropriately gifting or selling land that goes against the approved bond language, you know, I don't really think we should be moving this forward at all past tonight. You know, the last thing I want to do as a city councillor is jeopardize the potential future bonding capabilities by going against the intent of that bond. And again, I'm far from an attorney, but you know, my understanding of these situations is, you know, we've sold bonds to investors that believe that they were investing in, you know, what we said in that language. We've told the residents of the Saco that ultimately approved this bond in 2002, that we were buying land for Saco's future. And as, you know, Mr. Hamblin said, we bought Horton Woods, we bought Apprentice Property, several other properties, and I think at that time, the intent was to expand Diamond Park, not, you know, build senior housing. So as much as, as I think all of us are supportive of a senior housing project, I don't really think that this is the best location, given the history. Obviously, you know, if council chooses to move this forward, I certainly would advocate for, you know, recouping those funds and returning them to that designated fund so that we can put those funds to the appropriate use. The only other thing I would add is, is obviously, we have Tim Murphy's opinion, perhaps following up with the actual bond counsel, and I don't know what it is now, but in the past, it used to be Bill Stockmeyer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Councilor Hatch?
And with all due respect to the financial implications that have just been described, which I wholeheartedly support and feel we need to ferret out, if this does in fact move forward, I'm pleased to see that on page 18 of our packet from Carl Lacary, I hope I pronounced his name correctly, from Southern Main Affordable Housing, he did capture my suggestion that we provide a preference for Saco residents. But subsequent to my coming up with that thought, I carried it a little bit further. And if we are to move forward with this project, I think we have to give some consideration to some type of minimum Saco residency. I think to have somebody move here for a year and then decide they're gonna, they're gonna be able to move into the facility. I think we're probably more interested in folks who have had a longer history as Saco residents and trying to help them take this step of downsizing. So I just wanted to get that on the table, not to degrade from the importance of the comments that were just made.
Counsel, is there any objection to hearing from Guy Gagnon from the... Mr. Gagnon, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. And you're from the Bitterford Housing Authority, excuse me, Bitterford Housing Authority and Southern Main Housing Authority, correct?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. So I guess there's a couple of points that I wanted to make. One was, the parcel that this project is on is not the entire parcel that you're talking about, as far as what was acquired and was donated to the town. So when you talk about the entire, the parcel, it's really, it should be more accurately, it's a portion of that parcel. So there still will be a large portion of that that will be open space and part of the project in Diamond Park. So that was the whole intent originally, was to, that whole thing would be helped to open up that area. So I think that's an important thing to keep on in the mind. The other part is, the memo in 2011 came five years before we actually got approval from the planning board, as well as the city council. So in that five-year period, the city didn't think that there was an issue. And so it's just surprising that all of a sudden, it's become an issue. Our opinion is, it's already been resolved within the city and within the staff at the time, and to go back at this point and bring that back up as a reason to not do the project, to me, is not, I don't think that's in good faith, in my opinion. But yeah, some of you probably feel differently. So I just, I just wanted to make that point, and I guess, put yourself in our position, trying to do this affordable housing project, and having to basically hold on for all this period of time, for whatever reasons, and for the economy and all those sort of things. We really want to do this project. We think this, it's just a drop in the bucket of the need in the community. So, and I know you all understand that, I know you all support affordable housing, it just, I guess, I guess I'd like you to put yourself in our position with some of these things that, to me, are, have already, these issues have already been resolved. And just as a side note, affordable housing is extremely, extremely difficult to do. It's not, from a financial point. So we really appreciate the city wanting to help their citizens and providing this portion of that parcel to do that. And we're hoping that you can go back to the previous approvals and say, yes, this was all done. We may not agree with it, but it's what the city agreed to do back five years ago. I guess that's really the point that I wanted to make.
Thank you, Mr. Gagnon. Counselors, any questions? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I guess I remain a little bit unclear about what the consequences to the city would be for violating the terms of this bond. And also, I remain a little bit unclear about the possibility of having the Bitterford Housing Authority or others reimburse the bond if we did indeed transfer the parcel to them. Are those, could somebody educate me on the consequences of violating the terms and the possibility of having them reimbursed?
City Planner Hamblin?
Councilor Berman, I can't speak with any specificity to that. What I can do between now and the public hearing in a couple of weeks is to, once again, communicate with the city attorney in all likely, well, I'm going to speculate that if Tim comes to understand that more detail is requested on this topic, which he will as soon as tomorrow, that he may in fact turn to bond counsel and pose the question. So I apologize for not having an answer right now, but we can certainly get one for you in short order.
Thank you, City Planner Hamblin. Councilor Archer?
Hi, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gagnon brought up some questions about, just some questions that maybe council should have known throughout maybe the last couple of years, five years, it's more than just your tenure here as mayor as well. It's my understanding that there used to be a liaison to the Board of Bitterford Housing Authority, and it's my understanding that there's not. Potentially, that should be relooked at, because that could have solved some of these questions or concerns that Mr. Gagnon had presented. So I'm not sure what led to the council liaison not being on the board, but that may have been a possible solution to the question that was brought up.
Thank you, Council Archer. Any further questions, discussion? Councilor Purdy?
Thank you. Yeah, I wholeheartedly support the project, but it just seems that there are a few unanswered questions. And rather than move it forward this time, I'm going to put a motion to table this until we've had a chance to see the information that City Planner Hamblin said was going to be coming before the public hearing. I'd rather, I'd rather see the information before we move this forward right now.
Motion to table by Councilor Purdy, second by Councilor Johnston. Roll call vote, Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman? Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail? Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to table passes six one. Brings us to Item C, First Reading, Chapter 81, Conveyance of City-Owned Property for Claire Parcels, page 19 in your packet. That is Councilor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On July 23, 2018, the City Council approved the purchase of 841 to 853 Portland Road, known as the Claire Parcels, with the intent of building a new industrial park. The cost of the parcels totaled $677,455. Since the purchase of these properties, the city has completed a wetland delineation of the property and submitted an inquiry to the EDA regarding grant funding for building a new road into the property. However, since there were still parcels available within the Millbrook Business Park and new parcels being created on Philip Spring Road, developing this area into a new business industrial park for the city has not been a top priority over the past two years. In January of 2021, the city adopted a market analysis and action plan matrix completed by the Kami and Associates. This plan directly addressed the questions of expanding city business industrial parks based on data and economic trends and forecasts. The market analysis found that the supply of industrial space in the region continues to be limited, and the demand for that type of space is moderate. There are growth opportunities in the cross-section of logistics and manufacturing. However, this demand is not significant enough to justify an expansion of Saco's business parks, considering the availability of privately-owned sites on the market currently. Therefore, the recommendation is to focus on attracting businesses within the opportunity sectors to existing park properties. Do not expand the business parks or dedicate resources to attracting amenities to the parks. The item was reviewed by the planning board at its June 15, 2021 meeting. The board voted 4-0 to forward a positive recommendation for the sale of lots, as outlined in Chapter 81 of the city code. I move to approve... I move to approve the first reading and to schedule a public hearing for July twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Archer, to approve the first reading and set public hearing for July twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I said much of this a couple of weeks ago, but you know, I certainly respect the opinions of those involved to this point, but personally I view this, selling these lots as being rather short sighted at this point in time. I think council that I was a part of in two thousand seventeen, when these lots were purchased, you know, that came forth as really as a goal of council to expand the business parks. And with that goal, administrator at the time, you know, started looking for available property. You know, the city has had really a longstanding history of being proactive with economic development, by recognizing potential future needs and making acquisitions of lands, you know, inappropriate. I mean, that really dates back all the way back to the late nineteen seventies. But regardless of whether or not we build a business park or not, you know, I also recall several discussions at the time about just the value of land and how, you know, it is finite. And it certainly made sense to the majority of council and staff at the time to pursue purchasing land and land banking it, whether it was for a business park or future city needs, you know, six hundred and seventy-some of a thousand, it certainly seemed like a decent price at the time. And obviously seeing some of these quotes now, four or five years later, it certainly seemed like it was. So I don't think really much has changed in that respect. The city owns the land, there's no bond, it's paid for. So continuing to hold on to it until, you know, we take care of some of the other needs we have makes sense to me. You know, in particular, just last year, maybe year and a half ago, we had the fire department before us asking to go to bond for satellite public safety facility, and they wanted to locate it in this area. So are we going to be here a year from now, two years from now, looking to purchase land again at that market price? I mean, it just seems foolish to me. And then, of course, there's the real big elephant in the room, so to speak, which is, you know, schools. We need to do something about our elementary schools. And having been involved in that school construction process back in twenty fifteen, I think that the real glaring issue was the lack of land. Obviously, there's less land today than there was in twenty fifteen. I can think of several parcels that we looked at that are now, are or are about to be used for other purposes, whether it's solar farms or housing developments. So while I don't necessarily know if the Claire Parcels are the ideal location for a new school, you know, it certainly seems to be trending in a direction. It may actually be the only location we have. And that brings me to a question, which is have we even reached out to the school department? Do they have any knowledge that we're, you know, they're about to start this process? And I do have some familiarity with the process. But if we're not on the same page with them and they're about to, you know, start this process next month, following month soon, and here we are looking to sell available land that we already own, I mean, it really could throw a wrench into things. I know the minimum acreage required for a new school is twenty acres, and that's really not ideal. That's the minimal. So again, honestly, as I said a few weeks ago, until the school department is at a point where it at least has a somewhat of an idea where a new school should be located, I don't really think the city should be selling any of this land. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
For a public hearing, aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero, to approve first reading and set public hearing for July twelfth. Brings us to item D, a first reading, chapter eighty-one, conveyance of city-owned property, Philip's Spring Road Parcel, page forty-nine in your packet, Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On July twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, the city of Saco purchased approximately forty-two acres of land from Sweetser, located off Moody Street, Interstate I ninety-five in the industrial park identified as tax map forty-two, lot one, for seven hundred thousand dollars. A subdivision plan, including the construction of Philip's Spring Road, a parcel for the Public Works Facility, and three additional vacant parcels, was approved by the planning board on seven, nine, nineteen. The proposal was to create a total of four lots, one of which is designed for the, designed for the new public water works facility, and others which are proposed to be sold at a future date for development purposes. The lots proposed for sale are two, are lots two and three, because they are currently buildable lots with frontage on Philip's Spring Road. These lots are between five point four acres and six acres in the area. This item was reviewed by the planning board at its June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. The board voted four, zero to forward a positive recommendation for the sale of the lots as outlined in chapter eighty-one to city code. I move to approve the first reading and to schedule a public hearing for July twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy, to approve first reading and set public hearing for July twelfth. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. While admittedly, this is a little bit of a different situation, as prior council did have conversations about subdividing and selling these lots as part of the TPW garage land acquisition. Again, given the unresolved school issue, it does seem a bit premature to me. I know I, at least personally, have had some conceptual, you know, ideas floated my way and back and forth between myself and other members of the community over the last several years, really since we located or identified that site as a DPW location of that potentially being like a city campus where you could have a school there and you'd have co-location of buses and say maintenance along with other services. So I mean, obviously, that would probably require more or additional land. And again, it's totally conceptual. So I mean, it's just one of the, one less locations that we will have going towards a new school. And so again, for that reason, I think waiting six months or however long it is until we've ruled out all city-owned land as a possibility for a school makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. I would ask the city to vet that because I believe that, believe that council approved back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen in the zone I one and I two, medical marijuana, which can't be within a thousand feet of a school, if I understand correctly, if I remember back to the ordinance that we created. I'd want to do some searching on that to make sure and rule out that parcel because if, if, if it can be ruled out now, it's a simple, simple procedure. But if you look, that parcel butts the I one zone on two sides. Let me take that back, on two sides as it looks like. So at the entrance and on the backside. So and I'm just looking at page fifty-two of the packet. Counselor Hatch?
Yes, I would just like to echo Counselor Johnson's concerns about citing for a school. I did have some conversations with Director Clavett. I was more focused in on a satellite public safety location. She did express some logical reasons why that the parcels may not be appropriate for that use, but I did not address the, the school issue. So I would want to reinforce Counselor Johnson's point and have some dialogue. The Claire Parcel, if we have an issue with the, with the industrial park zoning for a school, that's okay. At least we can establish that. But I think the Claire Parcel may be one that should at least be talked about with the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hatch. Any further discussion? Roll call vote on conveyance of city-owned property, Philip's Spring Road Parcel, approving first reading and setting public hearing for the twelfth. Counsel Archer?
Sorry about that, someone's at the front door.
Counselor? Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. Brings us to item E, a first reading of a zoning ordinance amendment, request to terminate contract zone at four oh one Main Street on page seventy-nine in the packet. Counselor Johnston?
The owners of the property at four oh one Main Street request the contract zone agreement that allowed a personal service, services business to be operated by Acapello Salons, Inc. be terminated. Just as a contract zone represents an amendment to the zoning ordinance, proposed termination is also an amendment to the ordinance for which city council review and approval is necessary. Contract zone was approved by the council on January seventeenth, twenty-six, or two thousand and six. Acapello was open at this location until twenty nineteen. When this business moved to five ten Main Street, with the termination, zoning would return to the underlying and adjacent medium density residential zone. Status amendments to zoning map in this chapter made under this section may be amended or appealed by the city council. Staff supports the termination of the contract zone as proposed by the applicant. I move to approve the first reading and to schedule a public hearing for July twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor McPhail. Discussion? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, I'm wondering if City Planner Hamblin can clarify the link between the site plan amendment that's been filed and reviewed and the contract zone termination. I was confused about the linkage between them.
City Planner Hamblin?
One moment. There we go, I'm unmuted. I'm searching for a way to most clearly discuss this. Okay, a common thread between the two. The applicant, and for ease, for ease's sake, I will simply refer to the applicant as Acapello, the salon that formerly occupied this property. Acapello both proposed the site plan amendment with the intention of dividing the parcel into two, so as to add up with a second buildable lot. And then Acapello's intent was to sell both the existing older home that housed the salon as well as a new house lot that would then be buildable. This ran into interference. It became the subject of an appeal by the neighboring church. As, as the weeks and months went by, Acapello considered its options and came up with, could we not solve this situation perhaps more easily by seeking to terminate the contract zone that allowed the salon in the first place? The, Acapello has been advised by its own attorney. That attorney essentially ran the flag up the pole and asked the city for its opinion. Attorney Natalie Burns has advised, actually myself, the city planner, on this issue, and she agreed that should cause no, no legal problems if that's how Acapello chose to proceed. So in a nutshell, both were put forward by, again, by the, the original applicant, Acapello, ran into a roadblock with one, decided to try the second approach, and that, of course, is before the council this evening. Does that get to the crux of what you were seeking, Counselor Berman? Or is there more information you're interested in? And let me qualify my response, too. I spoke with the city administrator last week sometime. We both felt that perhaps inviting Attorney Burns, Natalie Burns, to the meeting this evening could be helpful. So just to let you know, Mr. Mayor and counselors, I believe Natalie is with us and available if you have any questions.
No, City Planner Hamblin, I think that answered my questions. The, the basic nature is, is the appeal didn't seem relevant to the question before us, but I think you've explained their interrelation to me adequately. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McPhail?
Thank you. Ms. Mayor, I also believe that Ms. Giuliano may be on listening if we, anybody had questions for her about the intent for the property and some of the, because my understanding from the last meeting is that breaking the contract zone amendment is basically just saying that that property is no longer slotted for business use. It then just reverts back to a residential property. The easement is a individual agreement between Acapello and the church, that the city, it was not something that was, it was not a condition of the city. It was basically written in there as this is what the parties are doing. So dissolving the contract does not have any effect on the easement. It's just basically putting the property back into a residential sole use. But again, I do, if, yeah, if she is on, I know that she can give more understanding as to what her plan is for the property and, you know, trying to sell. And I do know that she is leasing now because she has not been able to sell because of the pending issues surrounding the property at this time.
Thank you, Counsel McPhail. And I don't think, I'm not sure how far the council wants to go down the rabbit hole of talking to folks about what they plan on doing with their property. This is simply a contract zone dissolution, which as many of you will remember, we have probably some of the largest number of contract zones in the community of this size. And this is trying to get rid of one, and the easement issues can be worked out between the parties who have easements. So really, this is, I'm not sure how far we want to go with diving into the weeds here, but I'm willing to entertain some motions and/or some discussion points.
I was just starting that out there along with Mike's comment, and if anybody else had any other questions about the property itself.
Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This cancellation, I think, brings up the perfect reasoning or just discussion on why we shouldn't have as many contract zones. My concern is that we're trying to, not we, the, and again, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the applicant, but I'll tell you what my concerns are, is that there's a possibility that we're just trying to meet the market needs. And then if those market needs get adjusted, it will then come back to us as a new contract zone to go back into commercial hands. This is why I get nervous, or just a little bit extra attention needs to be paid attention to contract zones, because we're not here to keep changing how a zone is through many hands. So that's my concern. It's the way I have, the way I It's the way I have, the way I understand it right now is that this commercial property will go back into residential use only, and I don't want to see it come back to commercial as the market changes. It should be staying. When you do planning and zoning, it's for several years. It's for many years, more than several. And to just keep flip-flopping back and using contract zone amendments to kind of supersede the planning board and our zoning rules is why I'm more hesitant on these facts. However, I'm willing to push this to public hearing because I do believe there needs to be more information. It's just this is a perfect example on what happens when we do contract zones. We shouldn't be flipping the usage within, what is it, fifteen years? Contract zones are not supposed to be used to change when the market changes. It's supposed to be kind of permanent. When I do a contract zone, that's what's in my head. So that's all I have to say on this. Again, I have some concerns about the flip-flopping, going back from residential to commercial, back to residential without doing just the regular process of planning, zoning, and all that good stuff, comp plan and all that good stuff. So that's all I have to add. I just wanted to let you know what my concern was, but I'm willing to push this forward to the public.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Any further discussion? Counsel, is there any objection to hearing from June Giuliano? June, you have been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the council.
Hi, thank you, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. My name is June Giuliano, and I reside at twenty-three Ridgeway Road in Scarborough. I just had one comment to make, and that is that the contract, to my belief, is between Acapello Salons in the city. So regardless as to whether if somebody buys, and this is what I've been told, whether if if somebody buys that house for commercial use, still have to go back to the city for approval to use for their own contract zone, because that contract, that CZA, is between Acapello Salons and myself and the city of Saco. So it seems to be some not clarity there, from what I understand, because we, you know, the house being on the market, we, obviously, we had people that were interested in using it for for business and had gone to the city and are well aware that they, too, have to go in front of planning as we did, because a year and a half to get through the process and get approval by the city to put in their restaurant, their coffee shop, whatever it is that they may want to do. So I'm not really, so I'm a little unclear as to Councilman Archer's comment.
Thank you, June.
Sure.
Counselor Archer.
Yes, recognizing that this isn't a debate, I just wanted to provide additional clarification. When I mentioned the bringing back, I am aware that it would be done through another entity, but if you, if you just look at the overarching theme of what a contract zone is, it's a way to bypass planning, zoning, things like that, to making an individual agreement with the council. It takes significant amount of staff resource, cash resources, and time. So I only like to see contract zones when they're exceptionally unique. I believe we have been active over twenties contract zones or more. I could be wrong, but I do remember we have a, there was a spreadsheet. So again, when I was talking about flipping back and forth, is that we should only be seeing it in the in the extreme circumstances. So if we bring this back to residential and some other buyer, again, I recognize some other buyer, some other entity wants to bring it back to commercial, this is why contract zones, when they're not used in that uniqueness factor, can create problems. And it takes a lot of resources to take that one entity, that one purpose, and keep swipping, swapping back and forth. As the applicant just stated, she's been doing it for about a year and a half, which is also staff time, city time, resources.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Any further discussion on this? Counselor Purdy.
Thank you. Can't speak to the specifics of the CZA, but my understanding seems to be with most of the other ones, that the the contract zone goes along with the property when it's sold, no matter who it's sold to. Except I can't really speak to the specifics of this one. It's just a thought that popped into my head, some of the other contract zones we've done. I remember the, you know, the one regarding apartments, if it was sold, then the the contract zone would go along to the new owner. But anyway, it's just something I wanted to throw out there. I was certainly for moving this forward to the public hearing and moving it forward, but just a, just a thought I wanted to throw out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Purdy. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. The question really isn't necessarily in regards to this. I'm just reviewing, you know, this contract zone, and a question came across my mind. With the zone change and all these districts having recently be changed, having recently changed, is there need to update all these contract zones since they're no longer the appropriate zone? It's just popped into my mind, and I'm just asking it now before I forget. Thank you.
City Administrator Ken Reth, can we look into whether all the contract zones need to be updated legally?
We can, yes, unless Bob or Natalie has a response now that they can weigh in with.
I'd be glad to speak my piece briefly. Counselor Johnston is absolutely correct. With the the new zoning ordinance and new map in place now, most, if not all, of the previous zoning districts across the city have been renamed. In several instances, the intent is is very similar, and other required standards are similar. But but yes, if you turn to a contract zone that was approved, say, six months ago, the terminology is now dated because of that zone change. So that that would be a great project for planning staff to go through an update and certainly to take a look at some of the several contract zones that have become null and void simply because the uses are no longer out there. I would just end by saying, to some extent, it's a matter of staff time. Truly sounds like a good project to take, to pick up and run with. But on the other hand, you've got applicants knocking at the door and the planning board just as busy as they can be. So perhaps with the beginning of the new fiscal year and the hiring of a second planner for the first time in the city's history, the additional staff power will allow something like that to happen.
Thank you, Bob. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. I would just add that, oh, I don't know, maybe maybe six months ago or so, I brought up, yeah, about six months ago, whenever we first approved the con, or the zoning ordinance, I brought up what I felt was a need for an amendment at the time, which was to incorporate all the contract zones into the actual ordinance, as they are part of the ordinance and they're nowhere to be found. So like, as, as, you know, addendum to the ordinance, we could list individual contracts, and maybe if we were to do that, we could update the contract zones at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Any further discussion? Roll call vote on request to terminate contract zone four oh one Main Street. Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to item F, a first reading, a blanket waiver of covenants for all business parks to add emergency use as a permitted use for Saco schools, page one twenty-one of the packet. Counselor Purdy.
Thank you. As you are aware, the Saco School Department is looking at temporary locations for schools while they await funding for a permanent larger school. Some of the lots that the school department was interested in pursuing are located within the city's business and industrial parks. The covenants for Spring Hill, Millbrook, and Industrial Park do not allow schools as permitted use. However, these covenants could be amended to allow the use. Denise Clever, director of planning and economic development, met with the group, looking at potential sites via Zoom, and after discussion, recommended that the school department approach the Economic Development Commission and the city council to pursue a blanket waiver of all business and industrial parks to add emergency use for the schools as a permitted use. Kevin Roche, who represented the schools at the Economic Development Commission meeting held on April twelfth, twenty twenty-one, spoke on their behalf, emphasizing this was to allow the schools and these parks as an option. At the April twelfth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the EDC meeting, Stephen Dupree moved to recommend to council a blanket waiver of covenants for all business parks to add emergency use for the school, Saco School Department, and Thornton Academy as a permitted use, subject to legal review and amendment language developed by the city attorney. Bob Quentin seconded the motion carried unanimously by roll call vote. On May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, city staff addressed the council's questions on the blanket waiver, received guidance from council on pursuing the blanket waiver. City staff consulted with legal counsel to develop amendment language and process for the amendment. Of note, the school department may not need to locate in the business parks, but a waiver would be a good option to have should the need arise. Economic and Community Development Department will be sending public notification to all owners in the respective business parks. I move that the city council holds first reading to amend the Millbrook Business Park covenants and the Spring Hill Business Park covenants to add emergency use for the Saco School Department and Thornton Academy as a permitted use, where the specific timeframe is outlined in the covenants, and set the public hearing for July twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I am certainly in favor of allowing the Saco Schools and Thornton Academy to use our business parks as part of an emergency measure, but I guess I was a little confused about the covenants as written. For example, on page one twenty-three of our packet, number three, it talks about Thornton Academy and the schools being now a permitted use. And similarly, on page one thirty-five, section I, it once again amends the covenants to allow schools as a permitted use. In no cases am I finding the words emergency or any language limiting the time by which this would be allowed. So I'm wondering if I'm missing something or if clarification can be offered, or if we're simply amending the covenants to have a permanent allowance of the schools into the business park, which would be something that I'm not in favor of.
Economic Development Specialist Burna, thank you for joining us this evening. Do you have an answer to that specific question?
Hi, yes, thank you. I know that the intention is for it to be time limited as discussed. I think I would need to look at the covenants with a with a fine-tooth comb, but I think regardless, we can double check with with Attorney Murphy before the public hearing to make sure that the document does reflect the intention.
Thank you.
Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to piggyback off of Counselor Burner. He made me look at one page, one thirty-five, or I'm on page one eighty-five, which I think is an amended draft where the original is what, on page one thirty-five? But I could be wrong as well. A lot of pages within this document, but I'm looking at section five point two, prohibited uses, section I, where it does identify the city's school department, Thornton Academy may lease real estate. Again, piggybacking off Counselor Purdy's statement, it's not, there's no definition. It's not defining who decides the emergency use, the school or the city. It's not defining the, if it's the council, it's, so we have, I think I have an issue there is where it's not, has no definition, and it also is not time limited. It does not provide what it means. One of the reasons why I think the city has to be involved, and I say has to, in conjunction with the school, of course, is that now they're going to be going into the city parks, the business parks. So I believe that's outside the purview of the school department, recognizing the emergency maybe, but to make it an emergency order in which the use changes temporarily, it needs to be clearly defined.
That is the sense I was concerned with. He's looking at the marked up version, and I was looking at the non-marked up version.
Thank you, Counselor Archer and Counselor Berman. It does say on, I don't know if you look, if you look on page one fifty-four in that section I, it does say. And provided that the terms of any such lease are reviewed and approved by the Saco City Council. So I think it would have to come to the city council to approve any lease in the business park under these amended covenants that have been put forth. And I'm looking on page, stand by, page one fifty-four of the pack. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Again, I agree with prior two counselors. But specifically, I guess, you know, when this first was brought up, and I don't remember, I think it was the EDC, I believe, you know, the intent was just for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And now we're actually amending the full document, this full covenants document, is couldn't we have just made like an addendum separate that was only good for a year? Because again, my concern is, is this stays permanently. Like, that's not my intent, at least this counselor. My intent was just for this year, not emergencies going forward. I think that future councils should be able to determine, you know, the next pandemic or what have you, if it's appropriate. So I definitely would look for, you know, a specific period of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, one of the reasons why I'm actually for putting it into here in amending is so that it's standing. However, it needs to be clearly defined on emergency powers, the authority. This is a little too loose for my comfort zone, which at present I'd probably vote down. The reason why I say this is that emergencies aren't just pandemics. We could have a hurricane in which the school roof falls in on one of our schools and we lose that. We've had tornadoes recently, strong winds. We could lose the ability to use one of our schools in the physical manner. Having it as written in this document, clearly defined, would allow a quick, a transition from that. from that disaster, the building in disaster in crisis, so pretty much, and allow the students to transition relatively quickly compared to having to deal with what we had to deal with most recently.
Thank you, Council Archer. Councilor Burna?
Yeah, thanks. Just to piggyback on Council Archer and Council Johnston, I was also expecting a time limited situation in which it would be separate from the permanent covenant. So although Council Archer makes some good points regarding a situation in the future. Regardless, what we don't want is this to be a solution for a space constraint or a solution to the new school construction, or otherwise an easy solution to solve the problem of where to put a school. That's what we're trying to avoid, and I'm not sure the current language accomplishes that, and I think it should.
Thank you, Councilor Berman. Economic Development Specialist Burna?
Thank you. I just wanted to jump in quickly to clarify what I said earlier. I think Councilor Archer is correct with the intention of this language to add it in. It's to account for the school department having future emergencies. So it was left more open rather than being timed to let me be aided to be able to move quickly in the future. But I'm hearing what the council is saying regarding making sure that there's more of a definition of what the emergency is so that it's not used with having spacing or other school siting issues.
Thank you, Jess. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call vote on this item, first reading blanket waiver for emergency use permitted by Saco Schools. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item ten, new business. We have two items under new business. One is item A, a legal update on marijuana regulations, page one ninety-two in your packet. And I believe we're going to hear from city solicitor Murphy, who's joining us. City Administrator Ken Rath. Will you be presenting, or is it just city solicitor Murphy?
This is an opportunity to get a legal update from Tim Murphy, and you see in your packet, he has also drafted a potential emergency action for you to take, should you wish to do so, based on his update and recommendations tonight. So I'll hand it over to Tim at this point.
Thank you very much. City Solicitor Murphy, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much for having me, Mayor. Thank you, Brian. So the city staff has been dealing in the last, I would say, two to three weeks with a conditional use application for property at two forty-seven Main Street. And there's some question whether that property is maybe used for marijuana-related business. And it's, as many of you may know, the property is the former Gorham Bike and Ski Parcel across from Saco Bedford Savings Institution. There is an applicant that proposes to put a marijuana retail operation in that space. That caused staff to sit together to discuss whether that was an allowed use and what steps would need to be taken to approve it. Also caused us to look at current city regulations, including chapter one sixty-five, one of which, which has in fact expired. Finally, we, there's some question whether the new zoning ordinance was intended or unintended to expand the allowed areas of the city where retail marijuana sales and/or dispensaries could be cited. So there is essentially within, we think appropriately within staff, confusion as to where you all stand, where the city stands on these matters. And we think it would behoove the city to enact a moratorium to afford you time within yourselves to take evidence, to hear what your intentions are, and to figure out as a policy goal, where does the city want to go with marijuana? I spoke with the attorney, that Jim Katsefikis, who assisted with the rezoning, and he indicated to me that neither the planning board or the council had actually intended or discussed where and how to cite marijuana within the city. Traditionally, staff have viewed it as limited to the industrial park zones. And a number of properties out there have converted to growing. Now there's a question whether it was desirable or intended to see it placed into the downtown zone in the heart of the city. That's a policy call for all of you, not for me. But it's something I think you need to start thinking about, and the emergency ordinance is a way for you to lock the situation in place, allow no further businesses until you can figure out what to do. If you think it's wise, in your judgment as the policymakers, to allow a use in a particular zone, then that's your call, and staff will be one hundred percent behind it and will help you accomplish it. But this is a way for you to buy yourself some time to figure out what to do. Now, one other side point, I think, and I don't know if they'll be able to present tonight, but the attorneys for the applicant, who was interested in the downtown Gorham, the former Gorham Bike and Ski Parcel, may want to talk to you tonight. Their concerns are that we presently denied them the ability to move that application forward. I would recommend that you not take that matter up. That is a zoning dispute. There are remedies in court for them, including rule eighty B or eighty C. If they feel that the city staff have aired, then that's their remedy. I would, as a prudential matter, and as I have in the past, discourage counsel from getting involved in lawsuits. I think when you start picking sides in those, you alienate one group of citizens to the benefit of another group of citizens. You saw the controversy that came with Flatley when you guys got involved in a zoning matter. The Estates at Bayview was another matter. It is generally an area you don't want to step in because it will leave people unhappy. The applicant at two forty-seven has a remedy. They can go to court. We will settle things and it'll get resolved, one way or another. So I would encourage you tonight to focus on, do you need, do you in fact need to buy some time to start reviewing this issue? Because right now, we're missing, one of our ordinances expired, and we have an applicant knocking on the door wanting to move into the downtown. So it's here, it's going to happen, and do you want to be out ahead of it? If so, the moratorium is a good way to start buying yourself some time to have the discussions that you as the policymakers of the city really need to have. Because as staff, we can only do what you guide us to do. With that, I'm happy to help if I can, and I'll leave it to your wisdom.
Thank you, Tim. City Administrator Ken Rath.
Thank you, Tim. I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit more about the opt-in action that would need to be taken? And also maybe also just respond to the claim that the opt-in was effectively done or completed with the adoption of the zoning ordinance. Can you just maybe speak to that and respond to that?
It's a state statute, it's in title twenty-two. It's allows, so much like liquor, the state of Maine controls liquor regulation. All right, that is what's called preemptive. In other words, the state thinks a particular area of law is so important that they're going to handle it, they're going to regulate it. That's how they view marijuana. They have passed a comprehensive ordinance, state statute in title twenty-two, regulating all the hows, whens, and wheres of marijuana, ever since the recreational referendum passed. Because now it was going to be a statewide issue. We were going to have both medical and recreational. So the state passed comprehensive rules. One of those rules says localities can regulate, can allow. But to do it, you need to, it's being called opt-in. You have to, you have to vote to regulate and allow marijuana. So the question is whether the ordinance, that you, the zoning ordinance, could that possibly count as the opt-in vote of the council? And that's what led me to call Attorney Katsefikis, who assisted with the rezoning. And it was his advice to me that neither the planning board nor the council had really discussed marijuana. And I went back and looked at the minutes independently and found that I couldn't find that the council in enacting the new zoning had intended or did discuss marijuana. So it's hard to view the zoning vote as the opt-in. So we are still, and that's what we've told this applicant at the downtown location, is that Saco really has never voted yet to opt in to marijuana. We're sort of in this no man's land. And so we think it's timely for you to talk about it. Maybe you want to. Maybe there are places beyond the industrial park where you think it's appropriate to base marijuana. That's a policy call for you. But it's something that, until you tell us, staff's going to take the position, we think rightly, that Saco has not opted into marijuana, that we're not allowing the expansion of its use, until you tell us.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions? Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Murphy, pardon my ignorance on this one, but if we were to go to a moratorium, I fail to believe that any of my fellow counselors have any, don't have an opinion on if, where, and how recreational marijuana, if it came to Saco by our votes, would, where it would be appropriate or wouldn't be appropriate. What is the quickest, or I should say shortest, possible moratorium we could pass in this sort of issue? Because I, considering this has been an issue that's been on the back burner for years since the voters of the state of Maine legalized recreational marijuana, I don't want to see the can on this one kicked perpetually down the road. If anything, I think this council has more than the ability to make an actual decision on this. So what is the shortest moratorium that we would be allowed to enact if we were to do that?
Yeah, no, that's, that's an appropriate question, and the charter is clear. You can enact an emergency ordinance tonight, or you could do it next week, or you could do it in two weeks. But if you enact an emergency ordinance, it can only run for sixty-one days, and then it expires of its own effect, unless you, the council, choose to extend it, which you can do, another sixty-one days. But, but that's it, sixty-one days, and we go back to status quo. Again, it's just an interim step. And by the way, the, the emergency moratorium does not get to the merits of whether the use should be expanded, contracted, where it should go. The moratorium's purpose is to put things in place for a mere sixty-one days so we can figure out what we want to do. It's not saying things are good or bad. It's saying, well, hold your horses. We don't know where we are. Let's get out the roadmap and try to figure it out before we decide.
Councilor Johnston, then Councilor Berman. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, if we can, as Tim's indicated, we can legally do this tonight, I suggest council move forward with that. I was a part of the zoning ordinance revision process, and I specifically brought up the issues of marijuana and where we were going to zone them during that process. And I think ultimately, at the committee level, we decided, hey, we'll deal with that later on. Let's get through the zoning, the major components of the zoning ordinance because obviously the marijuana retail component is much really larger, in my personal opinion. It's really larger than this council. It's a community issue. And so we stuck with zoning it to the industrial parks. And back in twenty eighteen or thereabout, whenever we introduced, you know, one sixty-four, when that expired, I had brought up issues, you know, that it expired. So, I mean, I just, I think that given, given the climate, and now that this is public, we probably could have people knocking on the door tomorrow, asking for more of this and filling our downtowns, which, you know, I think that this council can determine where we want to do at a later date. But I seriously suggest we do this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Johnson. Council Berman, then Council McPhail. Council Burna?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to clarify something and then ask a second question also. So I just want to make sure I understood Solicitor Murphy correctly, that even though the ordinance, the zoning ordinance, does list dispensaries as a conditional use in the downtown district, that shouldn't be considered as opting in according to whatever it is, title twenty-two of Maine law. Is that correct? Or those are two different processes? It's the zoning and then the opting in?
Yeah, so that's the argument, is by, by setting it up in certain zones, was that affirmatively an opt-in decision? And the interpretation, I think, a superior court will find, is that given the importance of the states turning some limited authority over to the cities and requiring an affirmative vote of a city, that vote has to be knowing, has to be intentional, and has to have been designed to be the marijuana opt-in decision. And as Council Johnston just pointed out, we never talked about it. We buried, we stopped in committee. We didn't want to push it forward because we had so many other things to get done in zoning. So clearly, all the evidence shows that the January vote was, was not intended as an opt-in. Now, it may be a de facto opt-in, that's what some people may argue. But I think the better argument is the superior court will say it had to be a knowing decision. You had to have said, yeah, this is why we're doing it. We're doing it because we do want to opt in, and here's why, and here's how. And so I just don't think that happened in your case, for good or bad. That's up to you, not me. I'm just telling you, I think, what a superior court will do.
Thank you. And then just to clarify, there's no sense in which the current applicants would be grandfathered in or already along in the process if we pass a moratorium tonight?
No, they, so they're, they're not even, they've submitted an application, but it hasn't yet gotten to planning board. What you're doing stands independent of them. They could be affected by it, but they're already affected by what staff have already decided. So it doesn't help their case, but it's not really the crux of their case either. I mean, their argument is, hey, staff, you should have moved us forward. So.
Thank you.
Councilor McPhail, then Councilor Johnston. Councilor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attorney Murphy, so for clarification purposes, when we're using the term marijuana, there's two definitions. We have the recreational adult use, and then we have medical. We allow medical in this city, which we have the approved zoning, whether it be the industrial.
Yeah.
But in our zoning ordinance, our registered dispensary definition is a not-for-profit medical caregiver use, in, conditional in the downtown district. So are we looking at this on which aspect of that, as it, the whole?
So we don't allow retail sales.
Correct.
We do, and this particular applicant appears to desire retail sales. I think part of the problem is for staff, product is not discernible in terms of, is it medical or is it recreational? It doesn't have an M printed on it. So we literally have no way to know what's medical and what's recreational from an enforcement perspective. So.
From my understanding, though, it would be some, I mean, if you go to a facility, you would be required to either be a caregiver or have your medical card present. Somebody just couldn't walk in off the street and purchase. You'd have to have your identification or backup to it. And does that differentiate between classification?
It depends on how scrupulous the owner and operator of the facility is, I suspect. And given the amount of revenue that is derived, and it begs the question. Mind you, this is a business that. Mind you, this is a business that, were it to open, could not take its daily revenue across the street and bank it into Saco benefit savings. Because it's illegal. This is still illegal. It's illegal at the federal level. So this, there's, there's even safety concerns about the amount of cash that would be in certain properties because they're not allowed to bank at anyone that's federally insured. So there, there's a whole host of problems about, but there's a whole host of opportunities as well. I mean.
So in looking at this emergency, or emergency ordinance, are we looking at as all uses? Kind of taking the step back from everything at this point?
Yeah.
Whether it be classified medical or however, you know, you want to refer to it?
Yes, it allows everything that exists as of today, which is substantial. A fair amount of the industrial park is already occupied. So all that would continue, it's unaffected. It's, you had to be in operation as of today. So if it was an ongoing business and they're cited somewhere, they're good to go, no problem.
Counselor Johnston, then Counselor Hatch. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Counselor McPhail just kind of touched upon what I was, was going to say, but the, the definition for dispensary, I mean, that goes back to the medical side of things. And, and when we touched upon this at the zoning ordinance revision, that's really where we left it. We said, hey, let's leave it as such. And we didn't touch the retail. We didn't say a dispensary is retail and medical. So we moved forward with what was already there, which was conditional use in the downtown for medical dispensary. And that's actually one of the, the issues at the time that I kind of raised was, you know, that definition. I thought we needed to, you know, rein in more of a definition, but that led to the conversation of where, where do we zone it? And, and, you know, that was, the decision was, hey, let's take this up at a whole nother point once the zoning ordinance is, is approved. So I guess that's kind of where we are. And, and I'm glad that, you know, city staff and everybody caught this.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Counselor Hatch.
I would be very supportive of a, a motion this evening to enact the emergency ordinance. I do want to, just as an, an additional comment, make sure that we have an ability to act quickly and put together whatever, whatever process we need to make that happen. So I'd like to put forth that motion, if I could.
Second.
So Tim just questioned procedure. I understand we're in a regular meeting, so motions can be made. And since new business, we've been using it more like workshop, but it's not a workshop, it's an actual meeting. An emergency motion like this can happen under the, under the rules and order of business of the council and the city charter and public law, correct?
Yes, the charter allows an emergency motion to be voted on the night it's brought out. And the reason, I mean, the policy reason is because it lasts such a short period of time. So it just is, a whole thing's in abeyance for a short period of time. So that, that's why it doesn't go through the traditional readings. When and if you get to legislative changes that you want, those will have to go through the normal process. Thank you very much. So Counselor Hatch, on page 193, will you just read the motion in?
I will.
That, that you have made and that Counselor Johnston has seconded.
I will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Be it ordered that the city council approve an emergency ordinance suspending all new marijuana uses for 61 days so the council may consider its best options and goals, I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch, seconded by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Counselor Hatch, your hand is up. Did you have any further discussion on this? Okay.
None.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Purdy. Counselor Purdy, one moment. City Administrator Kendra, do you have something?
Yes, thank you. Before you, you put this further motion, and Tim can speak to this also. I believe, Tim, on Friday, you contacted our office with two small, I think maybe just typo updates to the emergency ordinance you supplied. So in paragraphs five and nine on page 194, it should read section 165, not section 168. Is that correct, Tim? And maybe you just wanted to.
Yeah, I think, I think the corrected version got to the council. Right. I, I'm not, I can't see your packet, but I.
Okay. The one that went out on Thursday was still the old one, but the, the new one posted online, I know, is with the, the new. I just want to make sure we're using the, the 165, not eight.
Yes, I think that's correct. I thought, I, I drew this down from the packet.
Thank you.
Counselor Purdy, then Counselor Berman, then Counselor Johnston. Counselor Purdy.
Thank you. Just a couple of thoughts I wanted to throw out. I, I agree with Counselors Gunn. I don't want to see this perpetually kicked down the road. It's, it's something we're going to have to deal with, and we're going to have to make the decision. And I found a problem with that. But I do think, I will, I do agree that a moratorium for six days is a good idea, so we actually have the time to study the issue. One, one thought was, in regards to the difference between a dispensary and a, and a retail outlet, you know, looking at the, at the zoning ordinance, just a, an argument to be made that, that, I mean, if somebody's making the argument that, that we by default opted in by putting dispensaries in the downtown zone as a conditional use, I would argue that a condition, if, if it was a permitted use, I can see the argument, but where it's conditional, it's not automatic. Just, just some thoughts from, from the comments that other counselors have made. And I just figured I'd throw them out there. But definitely, definitely for putting a moratorium so that we can, we're going to do this, I want to make sure we do it right. And so I don't want to rush it. It's, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Purdy. Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, this is going to be a little weedy and detailed, but, but I'm, I'm looking at the emergency ordinance language now. And I'm looking at the fourth whereas, and it refers there to recreational, but not medical marijuana. It talks about the purpose of regulating the sale, use, cultivation, and distribution of recreational marijuana, not referring to medical. And similarly, on page 195 of the packet, or the second page of the moratorium, bullet point four, scope of moratorium. The second sentence talks about all retail sales of marijuana. And my understanding is we actually have three potential scenarios. We have a caregiver, not-for-profit scenario. We have a, a medical marijuana, but for-profit retail scenario, which is actually the, the proposed use. And we have a for-profit adult use scenario, which would be, you know, what we might call recreational. But I'm just making sure the language here is intended to and would cover all of those circumstances as, as part of the moratorium.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. So, you know, as other counselors indicated, I'm very much interested in, you know, obviously moving this along as, as fast as possible. But obviously, I recognize that the planning board has quite a agenda, or at least generally has quite a full agenda. So I, I'm just, I'm curious as to what the next steps would be. Is this, is this the city staff presenting a new ordinance, then council amending it? I just, I, I, I think that it might kind of benefit us all if we potentially had a joint meeting with the, the planning board and council kind of work through, you know? That way, we're not running into, you know, issues where this goes, planning board, they have a, a certain feeling on it, and it goes back to council, and we go through that whole process. I think getting on the same page kind of makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston.
Mr. Mayor.
Tim.
I wanted to address Counselor Berman's inquiry, and I'm sorry, it took me a minute to unmute. I, I would interpret section four of the moratorium to apply to everything. I mean, it was, it was drafted to try to reach everything, including expressly retail sales. You have this overlapping regulatory process, both at state and within our own zoning. Now, section 165 itself is expired. And so we're, it's really quite confusing. And it, it requires some appropriate time, given the seriousness of the issues. There are places for marijuana in probably every city, but that's up to you to think through and with some time. And right now, we're getting, we're now hit with one application. We're going to get more. And so I think that the time is right to, to start looking at it. But it is intended to reach, reach all.
City Solicitor Murphy, in section three of the moratorium on page 194, is that, is that kind of what you're saying? Where it reaches everybody except for those businesses or operations in existence and operating as of June 28, 2000? No new marijuana use businesses, operation, or entity shall be allowed or authorized in any zone, location, or property within the city of Saco.
It's both sections work in conjunction. Section three is saying, yes, this covers everybody unless you're an existing business as of this date. And then section four just goes on to say the scope is, is broad. It's intended intentionally to be broad. They serve, section three is important because it sets a timestamp on when did you have to exist to be valid? And if you're in the regulatory process pipeline since January 11, you also could be affected by this. So the state law allows you to do that, to make it partially retroactive. But if it's, if the business is operating as of today, it's good to go. So all those folks in the industrial park, they're not affected by this, which is appropriate because they're already operating.
Thank you. Counselor McPhail, then Counselor Gunn. Counselor McPhail.
Thank you. I just would, going to throw out real quick that once we get this portion completed, my understanding from some of the issues that I, or some of the things that I read this weekend when I was looking up ordinances and the state policies on this, is that if we come down to the decision of opting in or not, that it states council vote or sent to voter by ballot referendum. I would love to see it go to our voters. I believe that this type of issue should be sent out there. Probably won't be able to get it for November, but it is definitely something we need to look forward, look forward next year, possibly in June. And I would like to consider sending it to voters.
Thank you, Counselor McPhail. Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to concur with Counselor Johnston's opinion that we get the planning board involved. And given that the planning board has a full agenda, and they'll say so do we. And if we were to pass an emergency moratorium, that would put the actual debate on the substance of this matter in the early September meeting. So I would be open to a special meeting with the planning board. And given the weight of this issue, I think on its, just, you know, just heft alone, though, it would, it would necessitate its own meeting, though, for the simple reason that, I mean, this, I mean, we are going to make a, a serious decision whether or not we want to go through with any form of recreational marijuana as a business proposition. And people still have some serious pros and cons about the issue. The 2015 vote by the voters of the state of Maine notwithstanding. So I would like to see a vote, see a meeting between planning board and council specifically on this issue. The sooner the better. As my, and to reiterate, reiterate my earlier comments, I would fail to believe that any member of the planning board doesn't already have an opinion on where, if, and how we have recreational marijuana as a business model in the city. So I think we could have a very fruitful and very thoughtful discussion, and it would get us on the same page. That way, staff would have at least the most clear direction possible in terms of sort of crafting action for us as we get into September and possibly October. And to Counselor McPhail's point, since cities have the option to opt in in terms of, or opt out, for lack of a better term, or to seriously regulate their sales of alcohol, given, again, given the controversy and the strong opinions one way or the other. And to Solicitor Murphy's point that at the end of the day, it still remains federally prohibited. Cities, the city of Saco voters, in the end, definitely should have the final say on this, just as a matter of fairness, because we're, I mean, we're dealing with a controlled substance or just like we would alcohol. So I, I think it would be appropriate in the end. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Gunn. Any further discussion on this? On the emergency, the emergency motion? Seeing no further discussion by council, a roll call vote on the emergency motion. Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Emergency motion passes seven zero. That is enacting a 61-day moratorium. And with that, that brings us to item B of new business, a bike pedestrian bridge update on page 196 in your pack. And I think we're going to be updated by economic development specialist Jessa Burna. Jessa, welcome back.
Thank you. I have a brief presentation, just, I just need to share my screen.
Yeah, sharing your screen.
Awesome. Thank you. So tonight, I'm just going to give you a brief overview of the recently completed Saco Island multimodal bridge feasibility study. This project was completed by a consulting team led by Thornton Tomasetti earlier this month. The primary goals of this plan were, first of all, to investigate the feasibility of constructing a bike head bridge that would connect the Saco Transportation Center to the planned Pearl Street Park in Bitterford. So basically, as you can see in the picture, I'm parallel to the existing railroad bridge in that location. Two, to identify and illustrate two possible design concepts based on site restraints and public input. Three, estimate the cost for each design concept, including possible permitting, full design, engineering, construction, and right-of-way acquisition costs. And finally, to identify potential funding sources and next steps. So some of the benefits of the bike head bridge, as identified in the plan, are, first of all, to create an iconic destination for the region and support transportation and recreation. Provide access to the Saco River and scenic falls, walking trails, and new development. Encourage community-based economic development. Provide safe, affordable, and sustainable means of recreation and transportation. Support smart growth and increased transit ridership, and also promoting a shift away from personal vehicle use and alleviating traffic congestion issues. As you're probably aware, they are building a rather large parking garage in Bitterford. So that connection to allow people accessing the transportation center to have easier access, we see as a, as a huge benefit to our transportation network, as well as just allowing the easier flow of people has great economic development opportunities. Public engagement was a part of this study. Both, we did, given that the whole project was during the pandemic, it was done mostly via surveys, but we did do a little video as well that's on our website. And for this sort of survey, I think we got pretty good feedback. And in general, there was very strong support for the project. Eighty-one percent of the comments were positive. Only eight were negative or opposing the project, and six were neutral. And all of the negative comments we received were more concerns about not the project itself, but more about the cost, potential cost. Participants. itself, but more about the cost, potential cost. Participants intend to use the bridge for recreation, as well as to seek destinations and shops and that sort of thing. And in terms of aesthetics, they were really looking for something that complemented the historic significance of the mill and draws on the natural resources of the Saco River. So as a result of this study, and the public input we heard, as well as a lot of engineering, technical, what is possible on the site, work, that is why we have engineers for, they, the consultants came up with four recommended alternatives. There's the curved girder bridge, the straight tight arch bridge, the straight girder bridge, and the straight truss bridge. The estimated cost projections are also listed here. As you can see, there's a large range, and they're very high values. However, I just want to make sure that it's clear that the, this is like the full cost of the bridge. Most of these projects are funded through either federal funds or grants, or some combination of such, or even sometimes public-private partnerships. But for federal funds of this sort of nature, the typical local match required is 25% or 20 or 25%. And in this instance, this project is envisioned being a 50/50 financial split with Biddeford. So that would bring any sort of out-of-pocket cost to the city significantly now. So just to give you a visual of what this bridge could or might look like, here's one of the renderings that the consultants showed. With this over here on the right is the Saco Transportation Center and the cross into Biddeford. This is the curved grid, girder bridge alignment. In the corner, you can see kind of at grade level what it would look like with the train in the background. And then we have another alignment, the straight tight arch bridge. Again, that's more of a straight alignment, parallel to the railroad, with more of a visual structure that you can see sort of from a greater distance is the appeal of that one. Another item I want to hit on is there were two, in addition to the consultants looking at the bridge structure itself, they also spent a lot of time considering where and how the bridge would tie in from either side, as making sure that connection is strong. It's very important to making sure the bridge is used. Our consultants, I think, probably had a bias towards Option A on the Saco side. So you can see here, this is the parking lot closer to the Saco River and the Saco Transportation Center. This Option A does allow for a little easier flow of people and more bridge visibility, a little sort of cleaner lines and paths to the bridge. However, it does take away double digits in parking spots. I want to say they're 12, 12 to 20s in that range. So there is a loss of parking at the Saco Transportation Center, which, although in the public survey, that was the preferred alternative as well, there is, you know, I think a lot of people have concerns about that. So we did also provide an Option B that does not eliminate any parking spot. So we do have kind of the concept that can absolutely work without any parking being impacted, which I think is extraordinarily important to make, and that's also just a great option to have on the table without impacting it, and also still getting a lot of the value that we have, although maybe a little less of a flow. So that's something to consider. And also, the, on the Saco approach, these two options, I'm pointing at it like you can see, can both be, all be done with any of the bridge options proposed. So it doesn't matter if it's the curved alignment or the straight. Either of these alternatives on the Saco side can be done with any of the alternatives that I just mentioned. The Biddeford approach, on the other hand, has some different constraints, and I won't, I won't get into all of those because they're not as much our concern, although it is a shared project. But as you'll see here, it ties into their new proposed Pearl Point Park, which is undergoing its own planning process at the moment, and there's a larger development behind it. And the, whether or not the bridge is the curved alignment or the straight really does impact the layout of the park. So it's kind of interesting. So it's like either the park layout may impact what our bridge options are, or the bridge option may impact what their park is. So there's a little bit of kind of timing and working together with Biddeford and coordinating on that process, which we were actively going. But I just want to make sure that you're aware kind of of that, of that give and take happening. And the city, city staff in Biddeford is also planning on giving a similar presentation to this to their council on July 6. So in terms of next steps, now that the concept plan of feasibility is studied, is complete, we have some feasible alternatives, options for moving forward, kind of a path forward. We did have a funding opportunity arise during the course of the project that we took, we already submitted an application for in March. So this is the PACS FHWA funding for preliminary design. And notification of whether or not the city has received that funding will be get hold to us from the PACS governing body, probably by the end of July. And if selected, both city councils would need to endorse the project and provide a 25% match. So that would be 12 and 1/2% each. And so Saco's share for this next phase of funding would be, depending on which design is considered, between $26,000 and $47,000, which has already been allocated in the FY '22 TIP budget. And finally, if the project's approved, it will be on, for this PACS funding, it will be on track to be in line basically for funding for the whole construction down the line. So tonight, I'm just looking for some input from the council, seeking your feedback on the preferred alternatives, and whether or not there's an interest and desire to pursue the preliminary design. And if this project is selected by PACS for preliminary design review, staff will return to council for a vote to endorse the project. And that's all I have for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jessa. Just a question. When Thornton Thomaselli, I think, was the company name, when they were going through this and when discussions were happening, was it talked about, about the transportation center and the potential changes to the transportation center with the charging stations of the new buses? I remember there was discussion about charging the buses and some of those, well, there was discussion about some of the parking spaces in the back parking lot. There was also discussion about charging them on the side of the street, where the, where the, where, almost where the sidewalk is. And then there was also charging up at the front of the transportation center. And so was that kind of talked about and gone over?
Yeah, it definitely was. We had representatives from BSOOB and the Down Eastern NEPRA on the advisory committee. We were in close coordination internally as well about what the plans for that project were, to make sure that there wasn't any, any conflict. My understanding, being on the BSOOB board, is that at this point, the electric vehicle chargers are planned for that, that front parking lot closer to Main Street at this time.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Berman?
Not so much a question. Just, I think it's an awesome project. I think it'll add a lot to Saco and Biddeford in our connection. I fully support moving forward and look forward to seeing its progress.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I can echo the same comments of Counselor Berman. I think it's a phenomenal opportunity to really tie the two downtowns together. Interestingly, it's a, it's a tieback to the late 1800s where a bridge actually, a pedestrian bridge actually existed there. As far as the design, I mean, obviously aesthetically, I think that, that the, the longer approach or the more fluid approach is probably, you know, in my opinion, you know, more preferable. But I also know of, you know, the very tight parking issues that have existed for years over in that area. So, I mean, obviously, I'll wait to see whatever the parking study says. But, I mean, I know from my own personal experience of listening to constituents and seeing it, particularly in the winter, I mean, that, that lot becomes the overflow for all of the downtown, and you, you won't find a spot available. So eliminating 20-plus parking spaces could be very problematic. Not, you know, unsurmountable, at least the last several years, you know, with the prior administrator and even the current, I've brought up the need for, or the potential for city to acquire the lot on the other side of the parking, or the other side of the railroad tracks. It's currently in the private hands, even if it's through a lease, I think there's 90 spaces over there or thereabouts. And so, I mean, that's still something I'm thinking that if we're going to go with the, you know, the more aesthetically pleasing route, we should probably also look to that approach of replacing the parking elsewhere. Thank you.
Can I also, sorry?
Go ahead, Jess.
Yeah, I just wanted to address that quickly. I want to just make sure I'm clear that moving forward with the project, it's, one of the great things is we don't actually need to make that decision because the costs are actually pretty similar. So I think as we do the parking study and learn more, we can make a decision down the line if we, if we feel it's okay, or makes, or maybe once the bridge is built, if the parking situation changes with the, with the parking garage, it really just, it doesn't affect much in terms of the total cost of the project. And also, it doesn't affect much in terms of the engineering. So I think we're in a good place to try and gather more data and make sure we don't make any, any rash decisions and eliminate any parking spots before, if people aren't comfortable.
Thank you, Jessa. Counselor Hatch, then Counselor Gunn. Counselor Hatch?
Yes, I just would also like to add my support to the project. For those of us who have traveled to other cities, I know Counselor McPhail just came back from Savannah, had an experience. I've been to several cities around the country that have river walks. It just is, I think it's a signature project that will literally change the, the face of, of the city in a very positive way. And the ability to link the, the two sister communities together, the way this is being proposed, is another huge, huge plus in my mind. So I just wanted to express my, my personal support for that.
Thank you, Counselor Hatch. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I want to echo the comments of my fellow counselors. This is going to be a wonderful thing, and I'm open to, personally, I'm open to any of the two designs, although I, not to speak for our friends over in Biddeford, but for their Plan B, for where, to have the straight bridge come into their proposed park would create sort of a, almost a mirror image of what they have over at Rotary, sort of a nice deep park on the river's edge that's kind of ringed in by pathways, which I think would have the potential to be a nice sort of area for them to have events, let alone joint events between the two cities, rather than having the path go through their potential new park with a curve design. But at the same time, I'll leave that up to our friends in Biddeford and say that I'd be happy with either one design, especially if, as has been stated, as we can make sure that we don't lose too many parking spaces in the, in the name of aesthetics, though. I mean, there has to be a balance, of course, between what looks good and what's practical. But either way, this is a solid project, and I look forward to seeing the next step.
Thank you, Counselor Gunn. Jess, I think there's a consensus of support for the project, so please keep us updated in the future.
Thank you. I will be sure to keep you updated as we move forward.
Thank you very much. That ends New Business for this evening. We are at Item 11 of the agenda, and that is administrative updates. City Administrator Keanra?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To lead off, I'd like to take a moment. You've all seen the news recently regarding cybersecurity threats with many municipalities around the country and around the state. Also, a couple main municipalities have fallen victim to. And recognize our IT department, in particular Director Ryan Farro, for all of their work and success in this issue, and at least so far, keeping us safe from these issues. Ryan was featured in a Bangor Daily News article this past week, talking about cybersecurity threats in the state of Maine, if you didn't see that article. And I also just want, obviously, to express my appreciation to the whole department, Ryan, Joe, and Henry, for all the work they've been doing on this issue and keeping us safe every day from these new, ever-increasing and advancing threats. So thank you very much to our IT department. They're doing a tremendous job, and we should be very thankful to have all three of them here with us. Next, I'd like to announce another city RFP opportunity. The city of Saco has issued an RFP on its bids and RFP webpage for a qualified and experienced firm to conduct a downtown parking study. This was delayed due to the pandemic, if you may remember from last year. This study will inventory and map existing public and private parking, analyze parking needs and opportunities, and provide recommendations through the development of a parking plan. The selected consultant must be an expert in compiling and analyzing parking information and data, creating parking demand projections, and making recommendations to address parking concerns, including public policies, programs, and management, public-private partnerships, and bicycle and pedestrian connectivity proposals will be due 11:00 a.m. on Monday, July 26, 2021. An update on our planning staff. We are currently in interviews for our new city planner with the retirement of Bob Hamblin, happening later this summer. And we hope to have a final candidate coming forward in the next, within, hopefully, the next couple of weeks. We've also begun the recruitment effort for our assistant city planner, which was approved, as you know, in our fiscal year 2022 budget. So that is currently being advertised. And this, as Bob alluded to earlier, will be, we think, a big asset, increasing, addressing the increasing volume in the department and further assisting our many applicants before the city. Lastly, I've talked to a few of you about this individually already, but our senior tax workoff program, staff is currently working to research ordinances and programs in many other communities in consultation with Age Friendly to revamp the program and improve the program and to provide just more opportunities. We have been struggling with finding enough assignments of late for all of the, all the seniors. So we want to obviously make sure we're involving as many people as possible and making sure as many of those who are eligible can receive the benefit if they can. So that's, that's in progress, and we'll have some, some recommendations to bring forward to the council in the near future. And like I said, we have been in touch with Age Friendly, who have been a tremendous resource, as always, as we go forward and navigate this program and improve it. And we will have those recommendations to you sometime in the near future. So I have, happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for City Administrator Keanra? No questions. Moving on to Item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? Counselor Hatch?
Yes, I, I just, today was very, very warm, and the issue of cooling centers came to the forefront for me. I saw a publicized, the Seeds of Hope organization in Biddeford publicly indicated that they were a cooling center. And I actually think that we had some support from our Parks and Rec Department notifying folks of that. But it came to my attention that why, why don't we have a cooling center ourselves here in Saco? And of course, the, the first location that comes to mind is the, the community center. So I'm just curious as to why we don't, and whether or not we can just direct, you know, our Parks and Rec Department to consider creating one for our own citizens here in Saco, so they can have a place to go. I have no idea where, you know, what the, what the temperature cutoff is for, for that, but I think it would be a good service to our constituents if we could establish one, if one isn't already. And if there is one, I'd like to know that, and I apologize for not knowing.
Thank you, Counselor Hatch. City Administrator Keanra, can you research this and bring it forward to the city council?
Yeah, I can talk with, with Parks and Rec, and I'm not sure it's even something that would need to come back to the city council, if you're okay with that. I'm sure we can, we can make arrangements on, you know, say, obviously, days where there's, there's heat advisories issued, or days above 90 degrees, that, A, available air-conditioned space at the community center, you know, or maybe even, you know, City Hall, if something is available, could be used for those who are in need of some relief there. So I think we can, we can discuss that and accomplish that.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Any further council discussion and comment? Moving on to Item 13, executive session. There is no executive session tonight. The legal council that we're going to have update from is not ready, nor the collective bargaining agreement's ready. So we will push that on to the next city council meeting agenda, and hopefully, at that time, the legal documents will be ready for the council to consider. So there's no report from executive session at this time. Brings us to Item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved. Counselor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman, second by Counselor Hatch on adjournment. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Justin.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to adjourn at 8:40 p.m. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening.